I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the United Board of Education. Organized are generally held on the third Tuesday of the month. Board of Education is a body of school district residents elected by the community in charge of conducting school-related business. Meetings are conducted under the open meeting law but are not open forums for the community. With that being said, visitors to these meetings are to conduct themselves properly and with respect to any other individuals at the meeting. The Board of Education reserves the right to remove any individual for improper display of behavior or inappropriate language. The Board of Education will have a period of time devoted to visitor requests following any board presentations and approval admitted shortly after the opening of the meeting. Individuals wishing to address the Board will be permitted to speak for up to three minutes. A total of thirty minutes may be allowed for the public comment. We'll go over directions when that time comes. Carla, could you do a roll call for us, please?
Alexis Smith here.
Mrs. Benjamin here.
Mrs. Thompson here.
Mrs. Junker-Davis present.
Mr. Lamb here.
Mr. Stigall here.
Mrs. Emerson here.
Mr. Zeta here.
Thanks, Carla. Exactly, Anna.
Yeah, so the presentation, I have Mr. Montroy here, who obviously is now serving as our athletic director. Deputy Alejandro was mandated to work, so he could not be here this evening. I provided the Board a report and a request to begin a winter varsity and modified wrestling program for the upcoming school year. Really, per our procedures, we usually begin that whole process with having a club to gauge interest, to see, you know, how successful the program is. Obviously, our SRO Deputy Alejandro did hold one this past winter. There were lots of interests with it, and that was only at the middle level. And I provided you those reports. JC is here to answer any questions that you may have, but I thought we would have just a Q and A regarding, you know, opening up our district to having a winter wrestling program beginning this year.
Any questions for me?
How many kids were involved in the club?
So there were fifteen that signed up, but twelve showed up regularly. And the breakdown that was in the report was seven eighth graders and five sixth graders, so they were split between those two. They really enjoyed going, and perhaps the most striking to me was a lot of these students didn't participate in anything prior. So they didn't have any other extracurricular ties to the school that they kept. So it's a population that we needed to hook in, and they made remarkable gains in the classroom during that time as well. So Deputy Alejandro was able to walk that line of making sure that they're working, and they were, some of them weren't doing very poorly at the beginning of that twelve-week season, and then improved greatly over the time. So we did see some, and as I had mentioned, we expect to see those improvements when they're in extracurriculars, but that population showed a more drastic improvement than we might have expected. So they're really responding to them, though.
What are we looking for as far as expenses? Can we use the mats that we already have, or would we have to new mats?
This particular, this year, in order to try to keep the cost down, we wouldn't have any home meets. We'd do all our matches away. We would need singlets. We would need some supplies in terms of warm-up. It could be just simple sweatshirts and shorts, so we can put it into our budget for the following year. Headgear. So singlets and headgear would be minimum supplies and some form of warm-up.
Did we do an inch?
Probably looking at two coaching stipends if there was a varsity and modified level, so.
And Alejandro would be present, would come see it there?
That is our hope. If approved, those coaching positions would be a part of the OA TA contract. That remains to be seen, but, you know, he does know his wrestling. He was a wrestler. I think this is a position that you don't want to start with somebody new, but...
But according to the contract, if the teacher was wanting to fill that position, they would have first ability to do so.
Particularly with the wrestling, there's some language in there about making sure that it's a good fit in terms of knowledge base, so we don't want somebody getting seriously hurt in that. So there would be some discussion.
Right.
Depending on what the qualifications, working individuals.
JC, where did they compete last year? It was a club, but did they compete in like any tournaments?
Not at all.
So it was just basically kind of get in here, let's have some fun, let's learn some fundamentals?
Absolutely.
And I'm not real familiar with wrestling. I think the last time there was a program here, I was in eighth grade, maybe, so that was a couple of years ago. And we lost, we ended up losing that, I believe, because there wasn't the interest.
I believe the word I heard from teachers is that it went away only because the person who was coaching it retired, and they didn't have anybody who could do it.
That was Ross Amico, and he didn't retire. He was doing it at the time, so he was still, he was there, and I think he just was done, if I'm not mistaken.
That's right.
But that's a long time ago. I just wondered what would we deem as successful numbers moving forward and kind of weighing, you know, the amount of money that we're going to be spending on coaching stipends for the number of kids that we're reaching out to. Because I think that that's a balance, because I think we're coming into a budget period where we don't have the funds that we did last year or the previous years. And I want to be very careful about, how many kids is this?
He would anticipate about fifteen, fifteen to twenty at the varsity JV level. I'd say varsity JV, you'd only be two positions.
Right.
But JV and varsity, depending on how much experience a kid might have, could wrestle either one at the same meet.
There were quite a few kids that were interested, older kids that they, they purposely only did sixth and seventh graders, correct?
Correct.
So they didn't allow any of the other kids to sign up, but I know that there was...
So this, of course, would open it up to four more grades, and possibly, you know?
And it's an individual and team sport. You don't have enough to put a whole team together. You could still have them entering into tournaments and duel meets. They just have the less of a chance of winning a duel meet, or they could potentially individually win tournaments, similar to track and field. Compete individually and as a team.
What would the number be for a team? Like how many?
Ten.
Ten?
But it's weight classes, so if you have ten hundred and forty-five pounders, you're in trouble. So you really need a wide gamut from light to heavy.
I think the kid that won the states a couple of years ago came from a school, I think they had five kids on the team?
Yeah.
He won the states. So it's, that's kind of the nice thing about it, is it can be the individual event.
I was just going to ask, what other schools in our area would you be competing against? So there are several. What was that?
And the GR, every school has wrestling except for Pembroke.
Well, now, right. Well, Jaden was wrestling as a team of one.
Correct.
But was being coached elsewhere, but still represented under Pembroke. My question is, would this fall under the SOAR agreement? Would we be opening this up to Elba?
So you guys, it's not currently in the SOAR agreement, so that's what you might wish to...
Elba has sent, in briefly talking with their AD, Elba has sent a wrestler or two over to Byron version.
Right.
They may be interested just because we do have that SOAR agreement, and they do send their kids here, and also for transportation reasons, that I'm sure they would send, but that's completely up to...
So some of those expenditures could be allocated towards...
Wow, like what about, do they have any mats at Elba that we would be able to access to that?
And split that cost?
Maybe.
I don't know what's for that. We'll have to do it. One of, before allocating mats, I was, I wanted to be know that we're going forward to do it. I don't think, I remember Elba ever having a wrestling team, so I don't think they'd have any over there.
I couldn't tell you.
I don't think I remember ever...
I don't ever recall Elba having wrestling over there. I guess my only other question would be, and this came up a few years ago when we first proposed indoor track, and I think everyone's thinking that as enrollment in districts, especially across this county, decline, you've got the same population of kids, and the more sports we add during the same time of year. So if you're telling me that fifteen kids are going to do wrestling during basketball, indoor trap, swimming, my fear is that we just keep colling, and now we're already talking about potentially, you know, maybe going to two sections for sports or, you know, whatever the case may be. So as the new AD, is that something that you would be looking at when it comes to scheduling so these kids can continue to duel?
Absolutely.
So they don't have to choose between giving up swim for a wrestling match?
So right now, I've been working with Kim and Katie about swim program for the boys, because there are only two boys in the program that are coming back this year. And we need to do some round double work in creating a youth feeder program, so we asked some good ideas for that. Boys' basketball, I talked to Ryan, and he didn't think it would necessarily be very impactful upon his program and the great feeder program. So he didn't think it'd be very much of an impact to the programs. And then, to answer your questions, yes, be very mindful. Coach Beeler and Deputy Alejandro, I know both play nice in the sandbox, so I would anticipate those dual-sport athletes to be able to continue to duel sport.
Great.
I think for me financially, and we all know how the budget went last year bringing this together, and I think, you know, this next budget could be a real challenge too, where we all know what's going on, Plug Power, and we're anxiously awaiting a check for a few hundred thousand dollars that if we don't get is going to have a major impact on our cash flow. So to me, I wonder about starting new programs this school year that may potentially get cut as we put together our next budget. If that revenue dries up, the governor also put us on alert, right? She wasn't able to accomplish what she wanted to accomplish to aid to, you know, schools like us, but she said, "I'm going to try again." So we know financially, we've got tough times on the horizon. So I love, you know, Deputy Alejandro's interest in this, and I fully support the club activity that he did. We've been able to say yes to everything over my course of eight or nine years, and that's made it easy to do what we're doing. But we're in different times right now financially. I, so Johnson's section five kind of needs to know. I would wonder if we can give a tentative approval, and we're not putting this up for rules tonight, but a tentative approval based on the receipt of the Plug Power in due diligence term. If we don't get that money, I don't know what else we're going to have to cut, but we're going to have to figure things out. And I would think any new program that we sign up would be the first to go.
One thing to think about along those lines is, when you look at trying to engage students, reaching those populations that are hard to reach, and allocating the funds for those populations where you hit the biggest bang for the bucks, I wonder if this might be one of those ones that gives you a good return on investment down the road, so. What are your financial concerns?
I would have to kind of second what Matt's saying in the sense of, I mean, I love the club concept. I love getting involved. We have only done it one year. Obviously, with the financial concerns and uncertainties in the next couple, who knows budgets, but certainly this one coming forward, I would hate to pull back on something new versus, I mean, we've only had one year, and sometimes it's a good, you know, it's like that ninety-day rule, you get the one month, see how it goes, the middle goes on, and then maybe that second, third month, and you kind of have a good feel, it kind of goes by years. Maybe that would be probably a good continual trial. I think if I were to have to make a decision tonight, I would say let's kind of see how things go to kind of continue a club versus have to put more in and take out. But love the concept and love the kinetic.
To continue a club, you'd still have to pay advisor at this point, if only you're...
Advisor versus two, two potential mats, potential this, I mean...
I mean, the cost of advisor would be roughly half of varsity co-positions, so...
I mean, again, not against it whatsoever. I'm just, I'm leery about committing to more. We keep adding, we keep adding, but numbers keep going down, and now we're in these predicaments of making hard decisions that we had to really stress over the last budget, so it is just concerning, so definitely something to consider.
So you built ballpark, ten thousand. Was that including like transportation? So what we did now is no mates, you're saying, just getting together, but we're talking about all way mates, and there's going to be a transportation cost aspect of that?
I'd probably, yeah, I would say if you had a varsity and a modified coaching stipend, you had, you know, a few grand for some equipment, and you throw in transportation, I'd say probably somewhere in the ballpark between ten and fifteen thousand dollars total for a program.
Which, when you start, you know, you look at that number, you start thinking about aids and positions like that where you have to start winning. What are we, what are we looking at? I tell you, it's no joke, we were definitely, we were stressed with this past budget. It was really hard, really, really hard. We had to really evaluate, you know, are we as well set up and prepared for the future as we thought we were?
Well, I think we got lucky with some of the attrition that we did with moving positions around. We, you know, that was kind of a lucky timing and a lot of stuff, so we might not be as lucky in the next couple of budgets. It's definitely something to think about. What was that time line that they needed to answer? I know I saw it in here somewhere.
I think we were...
The sooner the better, because I would have to ask the league to redraw the meet schedule. So, I mean, you could wait until August board meeting, and I'll just let them know that.
So they make their schedule. So the first meet would be when?
The winter season's already drafted, so if we were to do a program, they just redrafted, which isn't unusual. You know, if you remember indoor starting, it was approved in November for a, maybe a little earlier than that, for the winter indoor season. So they can do it. It's just a small leeway we give them to do it.
I think for football, they have to wait to see who comes, shows up, and how many kids they got ready for.
We don't have a lot of schedule for that reason.
So, yeah, they're used to that.
It's actually, girls soccer and JV is the same goal right now, too.
Could it be possible, even if they decided to do a club this year, do fundraising, you know, absolutely wouldn't have the big costs this year, then they could actually fundraise if they contribute to the program possibly going forward?
Fundraising, I don't know, it'd be a, you guys' question, sometimes that's viewed negatively as well, so I don't know what the correct answers for that is.
Yeah, I think it's something that, I don't think we're prepared, it sounds like, to make a decision this evening, but let's not.
I would appreciate it. And you have a wrestling background too, right, JC?
I do wrestle.
So that'd be beneficial to if you were with us. Any other questions, guys? Okay, Carla, visitors request tonight?
We do. Erin Graham.
Do I sit still?
Do you?
Whatever you're calling it.
Oh, I gotta, I'm sorry, I gotta prove a minute. I'm jumping right to the presentations right there. Sorry. I jump on it. I do this a lot.
It's so darn...
It is, really. That's why I'm sitting here. Sorry. Approval of minutes, be it resolved at the minutes of the July ninth, twenty twenty-four regular reorganizational meetings be approved. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, sorry for that.
That's okay.
You are presenting, or you are visiting tonight, and I'm just going to go over this really quickly here, if that's okay. So you're gonna, you're gonna state your name in a second, and that's going to help us to get information back to you. It says that there's a three-minute time limit, but we're okay. That's got to stop watch out tonight, I don't think. And then we may have discussion, and we just may just pause and then kind of come back to you if we don't know, you know, the exact response you had at the time. So the floor is yours.
Awesome. So Erin Graham, I think I said state your address.
Yes, ma'am.
Barnesworth Avenue, Oakfield. And I want to just thank the Board and administration for allowing me the time to speak today. I'm here to discuss my disappointment with the facility use cost that we're landed on for outside groups to use the OACS facilities. Please know that my goal in coming here today is to be part of a solution that we can use for the community moving forward. I know the majority of you on the Board, but for those of you who don't know me, Erin Graham, I graduated from OACS in two thousand and two. I was a three-sport GR All-Star. I was state-recognized in two sports. I went on to play Division One volleyball, and I traveled the country playing sports, which is why I'm so incredibly passionate about programs here in our community that help enable kids to do the same thing and get outside of what is considered the small pond of Oakfield. So I have a couple of perspectives to come to you with today. The first one is as a club owner and coach. The goal for starting Elite was to have a program right here in Oakfield. I wanted to support our youth, not only today, tomorrow, but into the future as well. That support comes through training, development, additional time in the gym and/or on the field. Sixty-three percent of my program goes to Oakfield. If you want to talk just about the girl side of the program, it's seventy-five percent of my program are Oakfield kids who are using our facilities. In year one, the Elite program was incredibly successful, and that's not only thanks to our parents, our players, our community, but it's also thanks to Jeff, Jordan, Stacy, the janitorial staff, who was fantastic. They really helped support our program. They helped with scheduling, and that's how we were able to be successful, and I was able to run an at-cost program. It's not a shocker to you guys, the demographic of our area. The goal is to keep this an at-cost program where I can have more athletes joining from the Oakfield school. This past season, I gave out four full-ride scholarships, as the column in Travel Sports, for Oakfield kids to participate that would not have been able to participate had they not had that opportunity. So if anything, I'm in the red, which is why the increasing cost for using the facilities is so hard for me to stomach when I know that seventy-five percent of the girls in this program are bringing that knowledge, that energy, that hard work, that dedication right back here to the school. Being an OA alumni and one of the few people from our school that actually went on to play Division One sports, I'm passionate about delivering opportunities to our youth that I did not have. So when I was growing up, my parents had to drive me to Rochester three nights a week to play volleyball. The same thing with the Title Town kids who just graduated a few years back. They were going to Rochester and Buffalo to have facility time so that they could use their platform to grow themselves not only in sports but as people. And so, you know, I want to bring that back to the community now that I'm back living here in Western New York, and I wanted to uprise here in Oakfield, and I don't want to take my program anywhere else due to rising costs. And this goes back to our community and our feeder programs. The work that our community and youth are willing to put in outside of just school-presented opportunities is what's going to make the difference. Our community and feeder programs are run by people who genuinely care about our kids, who are not paid, who go out of their way to help our youth, and who cannot take on additional costs because they're already oftentimes coming out of their pocket. As a mother of future OA Hornets, as well as an Oakfield resident and taxpayer, I'm disappointed that this wasn't fought harder when these types of costs were being thrown around to be imposed on programs that build up our youth. It's disappointing that instead of enabling dedication, hard work, effort, and championship attitude, we would rather impede our ability to grow our youth athletes by imposing unrealistic costs that will force programs to leave Oakfield. The Board proposal to build out our athletic facility that was voted on recently, that our community then voted for, that facility is going to be incredible. I would love our athletes to be winning state championships and sectional championships in these facilities. And part of the program that I'm building is to enable these kids to participate on a very high level and bring that energy back to our school. I've done some research before I came here in front of you guys today. So at fifty dollars an hour on Saturday, using eight hours for fifteen Sundays, which is what I typically need for my programs, that's six thousand dollars. That forces me to go up in cost in my program, a hundred and fifty dollars per person, and I will lose athletes left and right at that cost because I already had to do so much this year to cut costs back and fundraise. In Elba, it would cost me fifty-five dollars a Sunday for those same eight hours, so less than a thousand dollars a year. Pembroke allows Venom to use their facilities for free because a good percentage of their program, much like Elite, goes to Pembroke. Byron version and Alexander, they don't charge at all for their facilities, and the way that they've gotten around this is that they have board-approved coaches or volunteers that are able to use the facilities. And I would be willing to go through any type of process to get myself in that same position so that we don't have to account for janitorial staff on a Sunday. I can tell you that I've been using our facilities and coaching youth sports for the last three-plus years, and we've had no issues, and we always leave the gym and fields better than we found them, and that is the goal, and that's what I preach to my kids. So I don't know that, I know some of you have been to youth games, and I don't know if everyone knows what we have coming up. A lot of the faces behind me here today are part of the Elite program, but these kids are so talented, and they are hungry. These kids, I mean, raise your hand if you want to play Division One sports. Raise your hand if you want to win state championships for our school. This is the energy that my program is bringing to our community. This is what I am trying to build and instill in all of these kids, and this is why this is so important to me, that we come up with a solution that allows these kids to continue to participate and keep this program here in Oakfield, and that's only going to happen if we come up with a solution that is less than fifty dollars an hour. Thank you.
Thank you. And applaud. I think as a Board, I definitely appreciate your advocacy and your passion for youth sports within our district and outside of it. It's really commendable. I think there's many Board members whose children have participated, mine included, and you've gotten all in, and I know my neighbor's really enjoyed working with you. He's grown as an athlete. Your research is well done, and we will take into consideration some of the points you made, and hopefully we'll get back to you. Appreciate that, yeah. I don't think anybody else has any other comments.
It's something we spent a lot of time on.
Yeah.
There's a lot of discussion, as you said, there's plenty of us that have our own kids that were using, you know, these facilities over the years on Sundays and had the benefit of that. And disappointed that it seems as though we would have to go a different route. We talked it out, talked it out some more, but where we arrived is where we landed. But I guess there could be more discussion, but yeah, we were all right there with you in what you're doing.
Appreciate that. I appreciate you coming here with a solution mindset. You know, I know that the cost was something that was discussed. And I do think it gives us something to talk about and something to think about because it sounds like other schools are doing this and making it work, thinking outside the box.
That's the tough thing, though, because you can go out and find comparables, and like I always go back to Kendall. Kendall's not open at all on Sundays. It's superintendent decision. There's no board call. At the end of the day, it doesn't have to be board call when it is the session. This could be a superintendent decision on its own, but we did support the decision, all seven of us, or six of us. I don't know if you supported it or not, Mallory. Maybe, maybe you did or maybe you didn't, but at the time, which wasn't too long ago, that was what it was. So you're right. All the examples you gave are great examples for it. There's all sorts of examples against it. It's where do we fall? I mean, this is where we fell less than sixty days ago, I believe.
Well, and I think the conversation even evolved because of not just a couple of the groups that we know or that our kids are involved in or whatnot. It became much more than that, not just Elite, not, you know, so that's where we got kind of, kind of forced into a discussion of, this is probably not even something on our radar because we've had a precedence of what we've had. And then you get an influx that became a, it isn't a problem until it's a problem. So then, again, those discussions...
We were talking about this in Camper Project before we approved it. I can remember probably about a year ago, but check the tapes, it's on there. I can remember asking, it's a nice thing about getting recorded. I can remember asking, with these beautiful turf facilities, are we going to be more likely or less likely to let outsiders use our facilities? And I think for some people, the answer was, of course, more likely. But to me, like, and we're playing on a turf facility that are edge, and there's no sunflower seeds, and there's no water bottles, and there's all sorts of rules, because these are beautiful facilities. The answer was more likely at that time.
At that time?
And we sort of arrived at this discussion here, and the future will tell what actually occurs. But yeah, I mean, to your point about the great facility we have, I guess we'll see about the future.
Someone that ran the youth football program was, you know, when we went around to different towns, like, we were one of the only ones at the time that we don't pay for the fields. Alexander at the time, I don't know if it still is, but they had a regime that came in that they started charging the football program so much that they went and built their own fields off school property because they wanted so much. So it's definitely a hard position to be in, and I don't...
Well, Pete, if you know somebody with a couple of million dollars, unhappy with that facility, if you could just get some hard land turned over, trust me, it's something on the radar.
It's actually funny that me and my wife talk about it all the time. I would love to build a huge indoor facility, you know, and sit it up. It would be great. to build a huge indoor facility, you know, and it would be great. And, you know, it's something I think we all take very serious. And it was a decision that came lightly. There was a lot of discussion about it, and we went back and forth on a lot of stuff. It's not easy.
And to be fair, if I could just add one more thing. Being part of a solution doesn't mean that it's my way or the highway. There's definitely some ground in there that I think we can work with. I think fifty dollars an hour is very steep, but I understand that there may be costing part if someone has to be on staff. I just don't know that that's fifty dollars an hour, and maybe we could come up with something that's a little more stemmicable that keeps the program right here in Oakfield, which is where the majority of my program actually goes to school. And so that's the reason. I'd just like for more conversation to be had to see if there's other solutions that we can come up with. Awesome. I gotta get these kids pizza and off to the JV basketball game. So thank you for having us.
See you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the approval of warrants. We have resolved that after an audit of the bills, payment of the warrants, and internal claims, audit reports be approved. Can I get a motion?
Yes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jackie. Any discussion, guys? Favor?
I have.
Close? Okay, John, we've got a policy again.
So I apologize to Justin and Matt, when we set the board agenda. I did not have this policy on here. And this has been a, I guess, a hot topic over the last year, and I would maybe even say since COVID, although we haven't seen it here. This policy is up for your first reading. It is an old policy from 2006 in regard to non-resident students, and I am more focused in on really the first part of this in regards to tuition. As you are aware, and maybe you're not, but I'm very aware that several districts have been leaning against not allowing non-resident students to attend their schools. There are different reasons for that. There are still some around here, but I wanted to give the board an opportunity to review this and provide a direction. Currently, right now, we have a student that's actually on the agenda later, a kindergarten student, that is, the family is looking to bring their child here. We actually have, I want to say, four more in the queue, which has been the highest that I've ever seen it. You know, the rates for tuition are set by the state. They aren't set by us. And what really the practice is, is that the latest tuition rate that we do have, which really comes out like the February or March before, we tell the parents and the families that they pay us September one for the first semester, and then when the new rates come out for this school year in February, March, then whatever the remaining balance is, they pay for the second semester. The concern that I have is districts are moving away from allowing this due to the fact that some of them are seeing an increased request for services to be provided. For example, a home district maybe won't provide a family, you know, some services. So they end up shopping around until they find a district that will. We need to be careful here because, you know, we really can't discriminate. We can't just say, yeah, we'll let you in, and yeah, we're not. There are some rules of why. My concern is, is that that's a possibility. There aren't many school districts in this area that allow for non-resident students, and my concern is, is that you could have a family that requests to come here, will pay tuition, and if the tuition is, say, seven thousand dollars, six thousand dollars, and yet the cost to educate their child could be somewhere up between eighty and ninety thousand dollars. You know, that's our concern. That's the talk among the school districts. It started a little bit after COVID. More so, you know, people wanted to come here because we were open five days a week and other school districts were remote. And now it seems to be that with all of the issues arising from, you know, COVID and the mental health and everything, that it's costing districts a lot of money if they're overcome a situation like that. So currently, our policy allows families to make a recommendation and request to pay tuition to come here. So this is up for, you know, a first reading.
And you're saying this won't affect, I apologize if it's in here, our, well, no, our teachers' kids?
Correct. That's a whole separate contract, per their teacher contract. They are allowed to bring their children here.
They continue to be allowed to.
Yes.
Outside of this.
Correct.
We really don't approve that as a board. That's.
Correct. Like I said, there's a person on the agenda tonight to approve. We have a few in the queue. Certainly, however this plays out, you know, you could, you know, grandfather, you know, these students in, but I thought it was appropriate that at least we revisit this and the board have some discussion on it of how you want to proceed in the future.
I think it's.
Is the issue that you can't charge more, or if a kid needs special services, you can't charge more?
Correct.
You can't.
And we can't deny them because of.
You can't deny it either. And here's the thing, and you're absolutely right, John. And I, you guys know I work at three school districts, and I've got a kid of my own, you know, that receives services. And a lot of the ARPA funding was spent in districts on adding six-one-ones, twelve-one-ones, blended rooms, extra support services, because it is, Justin can speak to this, these services are going up, 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 and the services, they just don't have enough. School districts don't have enough. So kids are getting waitlisted, not only at the county level, but they're getting waitlisted here. We've got kids of our own right here that get three times thirty speech, and maybe they're getting two times thirty because we don't have enough speech providers, and now we're out of compliance. So the issue becomes, these districts, a lot of them had to shut down classrooms because as we know, the ARPA funds have run out, and they've also got deficits of their own. So you're absolutely right. Parents are shopping around trying to find districts that have their own OTs, PTs, speech paths. They're not contracting out and have availability. So again, not that I'm trying to be selfish in any type of way, but we do have a responsibility to the students here at Oakfield, Alabama, to make sure they're getting their services and we're not spreading ourselves even more thin. Because the reality of it is, if we're going to continue to take on kids and not discriminate against them, we need to be prepared to take on more speech providers, PTs, OTs. It's just the reality of it. So how do you get around that? Like, man, just ask. Like, I don't know. But parents are definitely shopping around right now.
And obviously, my concern is to protect the district, and, you know, I don't want to see any sort of, you know, discrimination lawsuit, or, you know, you accept, you know, this kid and that kid, but you don't accept the other one. That's tough. It really is, you know, I mean, it's different from the elementary to the high school, you know, depending on class sizes and whatever. Obviously, you know, our class sizes are quite small. So, you know, you know, the person coming in, it's not a class size thing. We're not busting at the seams. You know, my concern for the future is telling a family that they can't come here and coming up with a valid reason why, and then having some sort of possible lawsuit against the district. And it's been a topic of conversation, and...
So it's tough to look at it from like, so on one hand, we're saying, all right, our enrollment's dropping.
Right.
We're trying to get more kids in here, and then we have disability, and this one hits a little hard home to me because this is how we came here. So we came through another district. And I know when we went two years before, we even had pay tuition because I kept that, I sent us a bill, we had to track them down to actually pay it. But, you know, you hate, I mean, I get, I mean, obviously, times have changed. You can't use facilities like we used to, and, you know, have these costs that are coming, but you hate to discourage, like even the policy in here that, you know, we had land in the district that we paid taxes on, and we even took that off the tuition, and nobody else does that. We looked at other districts at the time. And so it's definitely something that I think definitely needs to be looked at, but I hate to disencourage that, too. But obviously, there's a potential huge cost to us as well, so.
Yeah, and I think that all makes sense as well. That's a really good scenario because I was trying to think about the opposite perspective of why would we want to have additional students here and what might we lose? But I think the other thing is, you have to remember, we're also protecting the community for the residents that live here. And if we want the students here, which we absolutely do, we want the community to grow and have those people being taxpaying citizens that are contributing in a greater way to this community as well. So rather than just having it available, like you can get tuition and come here and have all the benefits of our school district and all the great things we can offer you, but you're not going to participate in the larger community, I think that would be a downfall. So I think, I mean, I think we have to think about it, obviously, but it makes sense to create a policy around this that supports those conversations so that we're not getting into a space where it becomes discriminatory in any way, for sure.
John, I saw a point of view where it says students who move from the district after completion can pay tuition. Would there be a benefit to a student paying if they were moving to the area? Let's say they knew the move was occurring in December when the house closing occurs. Could we have them pay tuition from September until December or whenever that legality process? Because I didn't see that in here.
Yeah.
It is in here?
In most, some districts.
Oh, I thought it was only on.
If you bring that legal paperwork, they will allow the student to come. If you can show that you're closing.
Yes.
They will allow them to come without paying tuition even though they don't reside in the district.
And finishing the year, too. Like, so if they're, if they're just going to move, you know, depending on where they are at.
It's really the timing of it all. You know, I mean, obviously, if we have, you know, a high school student that, you know, the family moves halfway through the year and they say, hey, can we at least finish out this year? Or if they're a senior, can they at least grant? Of course.
Right.
Or, you know, obviously, a family decides that, hey, we are going to move here, you know, we want the school year. Can we start our kid here? You know, with a little bit of, you know, some evidence, we wouldn't want to say, oh, yeah, you can start here in October or November. You'd want them to start fresh school year. So there are, you know, there is some flexibility that we do provide. But I, you know, I will say that this is the first summer that I think we've had five families want to send their kids here. All in all, I think it's a great thing. I was just with a realtor that said that the family moved up here from Clarence area and wanted a small rural district and did their research, and they want their child to come here, which is a positive, which is great. But not knowing anything about that, you know, it is a little concerning. It kind of handcuffs us a little bit. So.
It's tough because I, I'm seeing it more and more where I work, and you're seeing it from school districts that aren't performing so well, or don't have, you know, the safest of environments. So, you know, if you could picture, you know, a similar area to this, you know, the surrounding school districts, you say, well, why in the world would you have come? And they kind of relay what their experiences are in these other school districts. And it's like, oh, my gosh. And yeah, and on one hand, it's a really good thing that they want to come to our district, and it gets our numbers up on the same token. It's that sometimes it isn't. Like, there are situations that I had kids under my room, and it's like, holy smokes, this kid is going to cost them, he's such a drain to me personally, but like to all the services that they're going to use to support them. And is, you know, is that necessarily fair for the residents of Oakfield? I think the other thing that you've got to look at, too, in this situation is proof of residency. That's another thing that is becoming a bigger, bigger game out there in the world where parents or people are saying, like, they live within district, and they actually don't. And that's something that's got to be fatted as well. And that's really becoming an issue around. So I guess the only thing that I, one of the things that I see in here, and I know this is an older one, and I know it's very, Christine, but I wish that we could update the cost each year within this policy. So I know, listen, I know it's going to change, but I wish at some point, like, when it comes out, we can, we can.
We do that at the rework meeting every year. We do update that it's set by the state and state it in there. And if you're generic in here, it's always will fluctuate with that. If someone wants to have the information, it's public knowledge.
They can just ask, yeah.
We can include the link to where they can go find that information.
That would be great.
On our website, but at the same time, again, it depends on where you go with this policy. Those rates are dictated what we can charge other districts because there are times that other districts send students here. We have foster students that come here and will bill other districts of origin for things like that. However, you know, depending on where you go with this, it isn't necessary per se.
Yeah.
So last, what was it, two years ago, we created the six-one-one program?
That's a different situation. That's where students have an IEP in another district, and it's an intermunicipal agreement with a placement from another district versus a parental.
They pick us tuition to send their students here, correct. But to speak to that, some of the six-one-ones that were started during COVID were with COVID funding in surrounding districts. And now that that funding is gone, and they've incurred a deficit because of state aid, those, a lot of those programs have shut down. So when you think about outside placements, at the primary level, every district by October has waitlists. You've got kids that are looking for outside placements, and by October, everybody's already full before these classrooms shut down, right? So now that they're shut down and people need to protect their own, like, you got a six-one-one room, but guess what? You've probably got six students of your own in district. So that tuition money from Pembroke, York, Batavia, wherever, that's gone now. So now your budget has to support that six-one-one program because there's no tuition offsetting that cost. So it's kind of one of those delicate balances. And the other thing to keep in mind, too, like, we're not talking about McKinney-Vento, right? We're not talking about kids that are homeless and need a place to go. We're talking about kids that have a school district to go to. They just don't want to go there. They want to come here. So how do you create language within a policy? Again, it's, they can go to their home district, but for whatever reason, they don't want to go there. So I guess that's another perspective to look at it from, too. It's not that they're without the school.
And I can do some research and provide alternate language from other district policies that have addressed the same situation. I surveyed my Bosse's, the districts in our Bosse's. Eight of them responded, and all of them were absolutely not. We don't, we stopped that a long time ago. The only ones they allow is contractually through the teacher or employees' contracts.
And that's even, that's.
And that's only eight that responded. I'm guessing the rest of them are similar.
Mm-hmm.
I can provide, I'll do that research and get a touch on.
I don't know the, I don't know that we would know the legal language that could even be used in this policy. We could read it five hundred different ways. I think that there's legal jargon that needs to be in here for lawyers.
Yeah, but, yeah, right, bottom line discrimination.
We don't know what that is. So we almost have to outsource this and find somebody who knows this language.
All right. So we'll push it up for a second. Christine, anything for us today?
Nothing significant since our last meeting. We're knee-deep into closing up the year end and getting things started for the new year. I don't know if you guys all through district office, we've got a lot of boxes in there, materials coming in, and had a lot of activity with that. Fady's been very busy. So that's where we're at in the district office right now, so.
Thanks, Christine. John?
As we are more than halfway through July, I want to thank our custodial staff. I know that Mrs. Newton did at the last board meeting for the work that they have accomplished thus far. One additional huge challenge and project this summer is that they are repainting the hallways and doors of the elementary building. I sent the board a couple pictures. I went down there, the Saff. I went down there this afternoon and I was down there for a little bit last week. And the amount of work that they have already done, what a difference. It's, it's a fresh look. It looks, you know, it's great. And so I just wanna thank all of them for, you know, taking on that challenge. Summer, summer jobs aren't easy. You know, they're cleaning classrooms, they're polishing, they're waxing. And to throw in, oh, by the way, you're gonna repaint the inside of the elementary building. I went down there, they're happy, they're all working, they're singing to the music on the radio and they're just, you know, slaying that paint around and it looks fantastic. So I just wanna thank them for their great work so far. Last Tuesday, we met with our architects, construction managers and site conveyors for this next capital project work. And I'd like to give the board and the community an update. We continue to, what we call value engineer the scope of the work we identified and continue to receive estimates for the work involved. I am pleased that I believe with one or two more meetings, we can finalize these plans and submit this project to state ed in the upcoming months. That will put us right on target. One of the hurdles we are running into are some estimates. We know that the supplies, materials, labors, resources can quickly change in such a volatile market, kind of like our last capital project. I want the board and the community to know that we are closely monitoring and reviewing the scope of the work that involves the artificial turf at the baseball and softball infield. The additional community stadium, the eight lane track, football soccer turf field and the parking lot out back, which will all be constructed in this project, is considered site work because it is outside of our blueprint here. And there are financial limitations and identified allowances for such outside work of this blueprint. While this work will get done, we are just closely evaluating the most cost-saving way to do the work, which means we may just have to delay the timeline for those infields to be turfed. I will keep everyone posted as we learn more. All of the other work identified within this project is set to begin in April of 2025. The original thought was, obviously, the baseball softball diamonds, it's a spring sport. You're obviously going to have this spring season. We were going to do the, the stadium and everything come April, May and, and over the summer and be ready for the fall. And then possibly in the fall, turf those fields to get ready for the following season. There just may be a delay in that. I don't have any concrete specifics, but we're just, again, working out estimates. We're gonna see how all of this falls into play. And, you know, if something does need to give as far as site work goes, it would be, obviously, those two turf fields. Obviously, it would be the parking lot or the, or the football stadium. So we're just putting that work on delay and I'll keep the board updated on, you know, the estimates and when we know more. But everything else is, is on target, on time. We're looking to have that SED approval, hopefully around February. Go out to bid and hopefully start the work in late March, early April, so.
Is that turf on those fields something that when the work is done, you could say, we've ran out of money, so we're not doing it?
I don't wanna say that we're not doing it. You know, we need to be very cautious because when you, you know, advertise a capital project as such, you need to do it. For example, this last capital project, there were some pool renovations that needed to be done. We delayed it because of, obviously, the cost of some of this stuff. Now we're taking care of it with this capital project. So I don't ever wanna say that, well, we ran out of money, we're not going to do it. There's, there's ways that you can delay this. The site work, cost allowances, reset every five years. Obviously, with this last capital project, we did a bunch of site work with all of the bus loops and the parking lots and, and all of that, which eats up a lot of what the state ed will allow us to do. The brand new parking lot back there with, you know, the new stadium and track ate most of it up. So I'm not gonna say that we aren't gonna do it. It just might be delayed at this point. What we do is we call these, like, add-ons or add-alternates to the, to the work. There's a lot that we have set aside that isn't top priority. The science classrooms, that ag, that whole area back there, all gonna be done. Obviously, the stadium, the parking lot is all gonna be done. I don't wanna say that the turf fields at the infield were, you know, added on at the end. But when we had talked about, well, geez, if the turf company is gonna be here and doing the football fields, what's the cost to do the infields? And obviously, we were looking at it and couldn't do the whole fields, you know, even the outfield. So we had estimates about what the infields would be. So that's kind of why we added it into the project. Again, you know, the market's fluctuating and, you know, all the supplies and material costs. So our last meeting, you know, we were, we were over as far as the site work allowance. Well, what's gonna give? There's only a handful of things we're doing outside. It's the stadium, it's the parking lot and it's the infield. You know, at, at one point, you know, one of the, one of the gentlemen said, well, what if you just don't do the parking lot? Exactly. That's the, that's the look I gave. And I said, you can't have a, have a new stadium and all the concessions and things like that out there and, and expect to have meets and, and this beautiful area for competition and not have additional parking out back. So, so the only other thing that could give right now were the infields of, of, you know, of that. Again, I, it's, it's, it's an option that this just might be a delay if that's what needs to go. We are including this in our state ed, you know, capital project. You know, once it's approved, we can do it. Like I said, on our end, if we don't or if we have to delay it, should I say, you know, that, that's fine too, so. That's, that's where we're at, but everything else looks, looks to be good. And just a couple reminders, our entire admin team will be at the Genesee Valley Leadership Institute with the other districts next week, Tuesday through Thursday at Holiday Valley. And our SOAR meeting, which we will host here with Elba, is scheduled for Monday, August fifth at four o'clock. And I look forward to our summer board retreat, which is Tuesday, August thirteenth from five to eight. That's all I have.
Thanks, Jeff.
Nice company, wouldn't.
Yeah, too quickly, too quickly. Jaycee, anything tonight?
Just getting my feet wet with my new hat and having meetings. Well, I'm gonna meet the coaches right now to try to get a handle on what we need to do to start the year off. So it's a fun time, but a lot of stress, enjoying it. Getting used to that new hat.
Yeah, well, thanks for taking on the challenge and appreciate you reaching out to, to coaches and seeing what's going on. It's a, it's a great step in the right direction, I think. Thank you. Oh, I think it goes to you, Rob. Anything, anything new over there in the tech world?
Um, nothing new, just doing the usual summer things, new signing panels, changing things around. New batches of Chromebooks that we're getting out to the kindergartners and kind of the typical stuff we do during the summer. So thankfully to say, you probably saw in the news, you know, the blue screen death here in Oakfield. You know, the flights canceled. So it's, it only, I hate to say, but only affects Windows machines. So if it hit us, it would hit maybe a dozen people. But the hundreds and hundreds that are here are on Chrome OS, which is not prone to that. I'm happy that we are part of the Chrome OS.
Good job, Rob.
Rob, you wouldn't want to record X boards, I.
No, no.
I've got a special offer on a few, like. Thanks for the update, Rob. Mrs. Cisarano, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm doing well, doing well. Any, any updates tonight?
No.
Nothing.
Just some joy, I suppose.
Well, good, 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 good. Thank you. Alexis.
Um, all I gotta say is that for this July coming up, or for August, sorry, this July, we're gonna start doing what's called Link Crew, Link Crew training. And then we have freshman orientation coming up. For those of you who don't know what Link Crew is, basically, some high schoolers, what we do is we help eighth graders transition into high school as middle school to high school, it's one of those bigger things. So we're gonna start doing the training for that and then just the orientation for them to get them started. And then, yeah, that's about it.
Now, are you on Link Crew?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Sorry, Jeff.
Nope, I was gonna, yeah.
You were gonna say, and, and is this your, have you done multiple years?
Yeah, this is my second year. So as, um, I believe it's only open to juniors and seniors. Um, so we just kinda go up and we're like, okay, so here's how you do it. This is what's gonna happen. And then we just kinda help them. We become like their first friends. So then if they need help on stuff, we're kinda there and be like, oh, well, here's what I did. And just help them through that process.
Now, do you have a certain number of students that you're assigned to them?
Yes, so, uh, last year I had, I believe it was eight kids. And then sometimes when we get new kids, we just add them in or just switch them around. This year we have a lot more groups, so I don't know how many it's gonna be. Because last year we had, I think, five-ish groups. And this year it looks like we're gonna have close to like eight. So.
Well, thanks for doing that. Thank you.
And you meet with them throughout the, the whole year. It's just not a one-time orientation and whatever. You, you meet with them and have meetings throughout the year.
Yeah, we, so we have certain criteria we also have to meet. So you have to make sure we're doing something at least once a month sometimes of just connecting with our kids, having events with them. Uh, they provide stuff so we can just, like, the teachers, they have, what we do is like Thanksgiving or, um, like Olympics, so they make it all fun together, kinda just have like that fun competition thing. And then we meet with the teachers once a month, just to kinda go over like, how are the kids doing? We check on their grades. We have, if we have like problem children, we go and talk to them, see what we can help them to get better so they can have a good school year.
That's all right.
And so.
Good for you. Thanks, Alexis. I'm in the business. Be it resolved that items eight point two through eight point five be approved by a consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Eight point six, uh, school cafeteria prices. Be it resolved that the following school meal prices be in effect for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Hey, right.
A second.
That's cool.
Second. So just as, as a little information here, that practice and lunches are still free for, for each student. With that being said, if somebody would like a little extra snack. My kids.
It is not free to the employee, so I'm still trying to figure out.
You're trying to get the free lunch?
Yeah.
So why not?
I don't know.
Can't you just start with the basket where the kids put the stuff you don't want?
You know, you can get all the popcorn shrimp they don't eat.
I heard.
Oh, that's a whole blow. Just won't let that time up. So no, that's a great, that's, that's great for families. I think, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Carla, I think we, I got, we got a letter here that you've already forwarded to us. Thank you for that. On the personnel, be it resolved that items eleven point two through eleven point four be approved by a consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
I, I have the question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And I, and I should have said something before we went through this. How do we decide when it comes to the mentor mentee relationship? And the reason I ask this because over the years, I've noticed some odd pairing, I guess you could say. You know what I mean? Like an art teacher, it, it would make sense for an art teacher to mentor an art teacher, a music teacher. But sometimes I see like an English teacher mentoring the music teacher.
So there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of facets to it. So we have two mentor coordinators.
Okay.
Ryan Stellar and Gretchen Noack. And there's a committee that also includes Connie, Matt Peterson, Connie Rockow, Lynn, well, now Heather Newton, and it includes a few other teachers that sit down and look at our new teachers of, of who, who needs to be mentored. What happens is before all of that, teachers can sign up to be mentors. So we have a list that we need to work off of. Not everybody signs up to be a mentor. And then based on who signs up and who we need mentors for, they try to do the best pairings possible. If it's subject, great. If not, it's at least by building. And really, they sit down as a committee and decide who would be the best mentor for the new mentee. You know, like I said, you, you do wanna match up, you know, same, you know, grade level or same subject area, obviously the same building so they can meet. Sometimes that doesn't work out that way, especially when you have some single, you know, if you, if you have a tech teacher, sometimes you don't have another tech teacher or another music teacher or art teacher to mentor them or they didn't sign up for it. So we do the best, best, yeah, they do the best they can. Mentors need to have worked here in the district at least five years. And, you know, sometimes we also have mentor-mentee pairings that don't work out, so new mentors are assigned. Sometimes it is by, you know, personality and, and things like that. So there, there's a lot of, a lot of things that go into it. But there is a committee that decides.
I mean, it makes, sometimes I see the pairings and I'm like, I don't see how that person would be the best fit for another individual, not necessarily today.
Yeah, there's, there's a full committee that involves the union and, and the two mentor coordinators and that.
Thank you.
Question. May I also like to just thank Bernie Book Miller for taking on Jordan Babowski and I'm excited to see Jordan coming back and do some sort of teaching here.
Yeah.
So that's cool. Thanks, thanks for making me remember that. So after further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let's see, that's eleven point five. I have that since this too. This is permanent recommendation. Be it resolved that Fady Gonzalez, Deputy Treasurer, be made a permanent employee effective July sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Can I get a motion?
So.
Wait a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Fady. Onto closing remarks. Mallory, we'll start with you tonight.
Oh, starting with me.
Yeah.
Well, it's summer. I'm now officially made it through my second meeting, um, for the.
Not yet, Mallory.
Yeah, that's true. When I'm done here, when I'm done here, true. Uh, but no, I just wanna say thank you to all the teachers. I hope you're all enjoying your summers, getting things ready for the school year. I know for many of our teachers in administration, the summer isn't being, it stops. So, you know, I hope you're still getting some time to enjoy the vacation as you're prepping things for the fall already.
Thanks, Mallory. Rhian?
Uh, a lot of what she had just said, my daughter's participating right now in session one of summer school. And everyone has been very delightful in the elementary school and she is absolutely loving it. So thank you to all of the many people that we saw a few months ago that signed up to work over the summer months. Thank you to all of them. And I hope everyone is resting and relaxing and hydrating and enjoying their summer.
Resting. Jeez, who rests?
Wow.
Ditto to what the, the ladies said over here. We also got Fairweed going on and I know Todd and a lot of our students are at the, the Genesee County Fair. And one of my daughters is doing that as well this year. New experience with the goat club. So it's a totally new experience for me, but I appreciate it and I like all the, love seeing all the kids and all the hard work they do and really teaches them so much. So we spend our time at the chair as well as you guys as well. My middle daughter Tori is fourteen today, so I'm hoping she is having fun at her softball game, enjoying her birthday and I will catch up with her at some point today. So other than that, everyone enjoy the rest of the summer. Congratulations. Yeah.
Pete?
Well, it is amazing how fast summer's going. I think somebody tried to put something on my calendar the other day. We're trying to put it on a weekend. I'm like, I don't have too much of the summer. I can't, like, because it's almost then. But, you know, hopefully everybody's getting prepared to come back and they'll be here soon before you know it. But my family has taken on pickleball for the summer and it's been nice to come here each evening and. Uh but my family has taken on pickleball for the summer and it's been nice to come here each evening and uh.
I haven't cashed in yet.
It's, it's just when you walk in, like the place is beautiful, like and just the more time you spend on the grounds and you do, uh appreciate the staff a lot much more of just, everything's clean. And even while we're out there playing, you see them buzzing back and forth on the gator and then, you know, everybody's, like, they're still working. And it's like, you know, we're usually out there at seven, eight o'clock at night and uh the staff's still working. And the place is just beautiful, nice facilities, um they're doing a great job. Appreciate it. Thanks, Pete.
Mallory?
So I hope everybody's enjoying their summer and to piggyback off of Pete, I hear, I don't play pickleball. Um I see pickleball injuries at work, but I will say that a lot of people from the community um outside of Oakfield are using these facilities and can't say enough good about it. So it's really exciting to hear um when people come back and say, oh yeah, we've been out at Oakfield. And it makes me, me feel happy to know that they're enjoying our facilities as well. And I hope that everybody's enjoying their summers and I found a great quote, I have it on my computer today. Um so for those of you who can't get out on vacation, curl up with a good book and imagine yourself somewheres because a reader today is a leader tomorrow. Love the quote. Um found it at the Library of Congress and I think, you know, for those of us who can't get out and go on vacation and can't experience those, those great opportunities, we have opportunities right here in town to um set yourself up for excitement and a fantastical um experience. So curl up with a good book, head down to the Haxton and enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thanks, Jeff.
Do everything, bless for your pickleball, but uh it has to be at the other end. Because when the wind blows, it catches your ball and it blows it all the way to the end of the court.
Oh, that's what affects your exercise, but for years, it's kinda, so yeah, that's almost right.
So ma'am? So I'll recognize John's win on the pickleball. That's five years ago, six years ago, it's pickleball this and pickleball that. And I finally said, John, I have no idea what pickleball is. And sure enough, here we are, you know, it's the world's fastest growing sports.
Thanks, Pete.
Yeah. Um I was just gonna mention the fair, as Jack did, uh yes, Todd is there with a whole bunch of students. I think uh, you know, that's the best thing I think that Todd does, you know, for this program, for the school. He does a lot of great things for the school, is getting kids to the fair from this district who otherwise would never be at the fair. So that barn out back, if you go there, it ought to be awful quiet because I think probably all the pigs are there and steers are there and not the rabbits were making much noise, but the rabbits are there too. Um so a lot of, lot of kids, uh beating, having fun. Uh the market auction is Thursday night, so go pick up some expensive beef or a pair of rabbits.
Know that it goes to a good cause, a very good cause.
Yeah, I mean, it goes to college savings is what we told in the letters that we were sending there.
Exactly. Kids, kids are good cause, education.
So yeah, a lot of cool stuff. He also does the walking competition, so um it's, it's a good way to spend a day if you're gonna build and it'll be there plenty of some proceeds. Thanks, ma'am. Look at that, I don't have a whole lot to say other than I hope you're having a great summer out there, teachers, and I appreciate the staff that is here. It's a lot to get the doors back open again and I feel like the grounds look great and uh we're well on our way to another start. Um we still have a month left, so let's savor those few days and really enjoy that time to recover, so. With that being said, um that uh be it resolved that Board of Education will enter executive session at seven fourteen P M for the purposes of discussing employment history and for contract negotiations of a particular person. Can I get a motion? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Um favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.